Thank you very much. Welcome everyone to this, the regular meeting of the Council of the Corporation of Municipalities Central Elgin for Monday, March 27. And welcome those that are watching as well online, as well as the many people who are here in the chamber. We have councillors present, other than Ms Graham. Councillor Graham, I believe, is online with us this evening. And if we could rise please for the National Anthem. Thank you. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty. It was signed by the Weyon Dot and by Anishabi nations, including ancestors of Chipewas of the first Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hadassani, Atawandronk and Mississauga Nation. These First Nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Council, there any divestitures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof, please? Seeing none, could I get a mover and a seconder for the adoption of the minutes, please? Deputy Mayor Noble, Councillor Bachmann, any discussion? Seeing none, we have to call the, sorry, go ahead, please, Ms Leach.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Councillor Bachmann, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated March 13th, 2023 be adopted.
As Ms Councillor Graham is online, I think we have to call the vote, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. We'll just have Ms Cardoso take down the flag so that we can see Councillor Graham.
Yes.
Thank you. Please.
Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Councillor Connors?
Yes.
Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you very much. We have a full chamber this evening, welcome everyone, perhaps here for the next delegation. Our first delegation this evening, or our only delegation this evening, is about the Edward Street right-of-way stairs. Margot Jory, who is a resident of Orchard Beach, will be here and is going to come up to the podium to provide some information related to the proposed Edward Street right-of-way stairs. Ms Jory, are you available? Please come to the microphone.
There we go. Thank you. Councillors and Mayor Sloan, good evening. My name is Margot Jory, and I've been a resident of Port Stanley for over 50 years. And I'm here along with Emma Tamlin to speak on behalf of our Orchard Beach community, and we brought a few friends with us as well. The change of municipal representation in November of 2022 has created an information challenge. Our sense from reaching out to many of you, either by phone or email, is that you may not have a full understanding of the work we've done with Central Elgin, their legal team, and the previous council since 2019. Alternatives, accessibility and funding were thoroughly explored prior to our court date of October 24th, 2022. The judge transferred the lands we are talking about because we had an agreement in place to build some pedestrian stairs. As such, we're here to give you a clear history of what has taken place to date with the goal of gaining your support for building a basic set of stairs, pedestrian stairs from the bottom of Edward Street to Prospect Street as soon as possible. I made a presentation to council on August 26, 2019, to ask them to, on behalf of our community, to consider rebuilding a basic set of pedestrian stairs that once ran from the bottom of Edward Street to the top of Prospect Street to allow safe access to Little Beach and the village. Our group, with the assistance of Amy Dale of Gunnan Associates, has worked in good faith with council, Central Elgin staff, your legal council for the past three and a half years. All of this is evidenced in the affidavit sworn by Paul Shipway on October 12, 2022, and subsequently submitted to the Superior Court on October 24, 2022. I'd like to draw your attention to sections 16, 17 and 18 of Mr Shipway's submission to Superior Court, and in particular, section 18, where he says, "As of the date of this, my affidavit is the position of Central Elgin in accordance with direction from council that, if granted in this application, it will accept and assume ownership of and jurisdiction over the lands, and thereafter proceed to prepare and approve specific plans for the design, construction, maintenance and repair of a staircase between Edward Street and the Prospect Street extension to create and facilitate, in combination with the existing Prospect Street extension staircase, an improved pedestrian link between the eastern neighborhoods of Port Stanley, including the Orchard Park neighborhood and the rest of Port Stanley community. Rumours that the stairs never existed in the past is not accurate, as evidenced by the photos and a sign that say, "Use the stairs at your own risk", which was installed by the village of Port Stanley prior to the creation of the municipality of Central Elgin. Photo evidence was submitted to the court on October 24, 2022, and in fact, previous council members have admitted they remember the steps at a council meeting in this very room. It has been inferred that a set of stairs are problematic based on current accessibility guidelines. Little Beach is not an accessible beach. The current set of steps leading to Little Beach at the end of Prospect Street are not accessible. The stairs are continually used by families, young and old, with wagons and strollers in tow safely on a daily basis. Jeff Brooks, Director of Infrastructure and Community Services for Central Elgin, outlines in his affidavit on October 12, 2022, and presented to the Superior Court again on October 24, 2022, that a staircase similar to the one that currently exists within the Prospect Street extension right-of-way can be constructed in compliance with the Ontario Building Code and without violation of accessibility regulations. I'd like to draw your attention to section 20 of Mr Brooks' affidavit filed with the Superior Court on October 24, 2022, where Mr Brooks states, "He confirms that through my employment with Central Elgin and since its presentation to council in 2019, I have had periodic input into assessments of the merits of the ratepayers proposal for construction of a staircase upon the lands. In respect of that input and involvement, and make the following comments. A specific plan or design of any such staircase has not been developed, let alone finalised. That being stated, I concede that the preliminary work, concept utilized by municipal staff to assess the merits of the proposal is similar to the existing wooden staircase constructed within the Prospect Street extension right-of-way, between the Prospect Street extension roadway and the Little Beach area. I considered and thereafter determined that a working concept for such a staircase could be constructed upon the lands in compliance with the requirements of the Ontario Building Code and furthermore, without violation of accessibility regulations. To date, our group has spent in excess of $25,000 in legal fees to get us to this stage. We urge council to carefully consider this information with the expectation that you will follow through with your commitment to the design and installation of these stairs."
If I, if I may please, could you just state your name when you're, before you speak, please, thank you.
Yes, good evening, councillors, Mayor Sloan, neighbours and friends of Orchard Beach. My name is Emma Tamlin. I am a mother of two, a six-year-old boy, William, a four-year-old daughter, Harriet. And they are the fourth, they are fourth-generation Port Stanley villagers. My grandparents purchased the property at 153 Harrison Place in 1953, when my mother, standing just over there, was four years old. Despite growing up in London, attending university in Quebec and living for a decade in Toronto, I have always spent my summers in Port Stanley. It is a very special place to me, and Little Beach is an essential part of the Port Stanley experience. Little Beach is a meeting place for the community of Orchard Beach, where long hot summer days wash away in the surf, where we can connect with nature and get fresh air and exercise, where long-lasting friendships are formed over the collective efforts of sandcastle construction and mowed digging, where the boundless energy of youth is matched only by the endless crash of waves, and where I'm consistently able to connect with friends without any planning, coordination or effort, fun just happens there every day. But as a resident of Orchard Beach, we cannot legally access the Little Beach without going up and down Curry Boulevard, which is a narrow, two-lane road on a big hill with a blind corner and no sidewalks. I was grateful to see new speed limit signs installed last summer, but the road gets very tight when there are two cars passing and pedestrians and dogs and strollers and wagons and bikes and joggers, et cetera. As a pedestrian, I get very nervous whenever I'm walking up or down Curry Boulevard, especially with my children. And as a driver, I'm always very cautious. In my 40 years in Port Stanley, Curry Boulevard has never been busier. Councillors, I strongly encourage you to act quickly on the installation of these stairs from Edward Street to Prospect Street. The stairs would greatly reduce pedestrian traffic on Curry Boulevard and prevent the accident that is just waiting to happen there. These stairs would offer safe and legal access to Little Beach for residents of Orchard Beach. Without these stairs, the only safe access to Little Beach is by driving. But why would we want able-bodied residents to drive instead of walk? Why do we want residents taking up parking spots that would otherwise be used by tourists who will support our businesses? And why do we want to add to the traffic congestion in the village and increase our carbon footprint? As a long-time resident, I remember a time when those stairs existed. And as a long-time resident with many friends and connections, I've always been able to beg, borrow and steal my way to the beach without having to use Curry Boulevard to get there. But not everyone is so lucky, and I have much admiration for the Gunders, the Jories and the Harveys who have gone to great effort, time and expense to ensure that new residents and next generations of Orchard Beach will have safe and legal access to the beach. Little Beach is an essential part of the Orchard Beach community, and safe access to it is paramount. Please build these stairs and help us make Orchard Beach a safe, fun and desirable neighbourhood to live in and visit. Thank you on behalf of Orchard Beach, past, present and future.
Thank you, Ms Tamlin, Ms Jory. I just want to make a comment, and if we have any further questions, if you just state with the microphone. First of all, I, I, I live down the street, so I know very much about this file. I delivered papers and used the stairs 43 years ago. I think there might be a couple in attendance here that weren't especially good tippers, but that's another story. But I want to be clear that I do live on Prospect Street and make that, I think that's known to most. I did see there was geotechnical work being done. The group that was doing it did park in Prospect Street within the last couple of weeks. Before I ask council about questions, Mr Brooks, could you just give us an update on, on what's going on with respect to geotechnical work, please?
Sure, Mr Mayor. As council is aware, we did engage a consultant to undertake the geotechnical work and design for the Edward Street stairs. The boreholes have been done, and they're working on a geotechnical report right now. Staff would expect that a final design of the stairs will be available towards the end of this summer.
Quick question and a follow-up, if you don't mind, Mr Brooks. When you talk about a design versus a geotechnical report, if the geotechnical engineers have already been on, on site, would we expect something from them before that time, please?
The geotechnical information will inform the design of the stairs. So we wouldn't have a geotechnical report that we would present to the public. That geotechnical work would just inform the design of the stairs. Once the design is completed, as per the report, staff would post that finished design on Let's Talk Central Elgin.
Thank you, and I'm just going to follow up one more. So when you talk about the end of the summer, we're currently in March, almost at the end. Just like an idea of the timeframe and why it would take so long, please?
The time, we expect it to be done sometime this summer. That's not uncommon for a project of this size.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Ms Jory or Ms Tamlin, please? Seeing none, I thank you for your time, a very informative presentation, and thank you everyone for coming out. It's obviously a very important issue to you, and I thank you for coming and being part of the process. Moving forward, information received for information, I'll just wait for a moment. Sorry, just. Pardon me, I just want to recognise, I didn't know former Mayor Martin and Councillor Crevitz were in the, in the audience, I just wanted to welcome them to the meeting, please. Thank you. Items received for information, please. If I could get a mover and a seconder for items received for information, Councillor Connors, Councillor Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councillor Connors, seconded by Councillor Halpin, that correspondence items number one through five be received as information and filed.
Councillors, any questions or comments? All those in favour? Opposed? Oh, we have to have a recorded vote, thank you. Sorry, Ms Leach.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Councillor Connors?
Yes.
Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes. Carried. Reports, we're on to reports now, Central Elgin Planning Office, number one, CEP 1123, a consent application, 45599 Roberts Line, applicant Somerville Farms Sparta Limited, could I get a mover and a seconder? Councillor Halpin? Deputy Mayor Noble? Questions or comments?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councillor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report CEP 1123 be received for information, and that council has no objections to consent application E2223, 45599 Roberts Line, applicant Somerville Farms Sparta Limited, subject to the following recommended conditions. Approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit residential dwellings on the retained lands. A copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Elgin, and a drainage reassessment be done, if necessary, at the owner's expense.
All those in favour? Opposed, and we'll have to call the vote.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Councillor Connors?
Yes.
Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Item number two, CEP 1323, application to amend township of Yarmouth bylaw 19987716, Yarmouth Centre Road, Ralph William Wilson. If I could get a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor Watson, Councillor Connors? Questions or comments from council?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councillor Watson, seconded by Councillor Connors, that report CEP 1323 be received, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw to satisfy conditions of a residence surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at 7716 Yarmouth Centre Road, which may be legally described as concession six, part lot 15, municipality of Central Elgin. And further that, a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
All those in favour? Opposed, we have to, we have to call the vote, I'm sorry.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Councillor Connors?
Yes.
Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Our next item is from the Director of Financial Services Treasurer, DFS 0723, 2022 Public Sector Salary Disclosure, if I could get a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor Bachmann, Councillor Halpin, thank you. Questions or comments from council, pardon me, Ms Leach?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councillor Bachmann, seconded by Councillor Halpin, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin receive report DFS 723 regarding 2022 Public Sector Salary Disclosure for information.
Let's call the vote.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Councillor Connors?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, number four, DFS 0823, Statement of Remuneration Expenses for Council Members. If I could get a mover and a seconder, please, Deputy Mayor Noble, Councillor Connors? Any discussion? Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Councillor Connors, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin receive report DFS 823 regarding 2023 Statement of Remuneration and Expenses for Council Members for information.
If you could call the vote, please, Ms Leach.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
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 Oh. Councillor Connors?
Yes.
Sorry, the stamp went down. That's carried.
Thank you. Number five, DFS 0923, 2022 Development Charges Annual Continuity Statement. If I could get a mover and a seconder, Councillor Halpin, Deputy Mayor Noble? Any discussion, council? Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councillor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report DFS 923 regarding development charges annual continuity statement be received for information.
And we're going to be able to show hands on this one. Welcome, Councillor Graham, thanks for joining us in person, I know you've been online. All those in favour, please? Opposed? Carried. Now to motions and notice of motion, closed session report format, can I? Councillor Halpin, did you want to speak to this, please?
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I think that this may be more or less self-evident. The request here is that we change our procedures so that going forward, we do not do verbal reports in closed session. The goal of that being that people would enter into closed session knowing what the matter is that's going to be discussed and what decisions might need to be made, which would give them advance notice over the course of the weekend, at the same time that they're reading the rest of the agenda, to do whatever background homework they would like to do to prepare themselves.
Questions or comments? Mover and a seconder, please, Councillor Halpin, Councillor Bachmann?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councillor Halpin, seconded by Councillor Bachmann, whereas all members of council have the right to information to help make decisions unless otherwise prevented by law, now therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to bring forward an amendment to section four of the procedural bylaw 2606, that no report received in closed session may be fully verbal in its presentation, and that council has a right to receive a written report of the material facts of the matter and of any decision that is to be made.
Thank you. All those in favour, please? Opposed? Motions defeated?
I would ask that we record that vote, please.
Sure, if we can have a recorded vote, please, Ms Leach.
Councillor Graham? Councillor Halpin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
No.
Councillor Connors?
No.
Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
No.
Mayor Sloan?
No.
That's defeated.
Next item on the agenda is a hiring committee, a permanent CAO. Questions, comments? Counsel. Councillor Graham?
I'm just wondering if, did we not already discuss this and vote on it back on February 27th meeting? And defeated this motion?
If I may ask, Ms Wilson, please?
Through you, to the rest of council, Mayor Sloan, that motion had different wording than this motion?
Thank you, Councillor Graham, follow up?
Could I ask what the difference is in the content related to the wording then, please?
Councillor Halpin, please, thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Sloan. At the time that we made that decision, the general consensus of council was that people felt that they were not yet prepared. There had not been decisions made about who might be on a committee, and people had not had sufficient time to learn what would be involved in a hiring process. We do now have that. Uh, we do now have that information provided to us by HR, which is lovely, but, um, for those who still haven't prepared themselves or who need more time to make a decision, this proposes that we have HR begin the actual process of advertising the position so that we can begin to get responses, but does allow us time to form our committee over the course of the next several weeks, which gives us reasonable time to ask questions that we need to, to HR, and to decide what the merits would be of, say, a two or a three-person committee, whether we want efficiency or whether we want a larger amount of group consensus, and so we can come into this better prepared without slowing down the process, since I believe that we do all agree that we need a CAO, and we can't take any longer on this.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin, Counselor Bachman, please.
Um, based on the consultant that was hired, Mr. Dobbin, um, he actually recommended this takes anywhere from four, four-plus months to fill this, um, necessary position, and, uh, and I don't see a problem with us starting and getting the ball rolling right now.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Bachman, other comments from council? All those in favor of the motion? Oh, did I do a mover and a seconder? Apologies, I was getting out of line. Um, mover and a seconder, please, Counselor Halpin, Counselor Bachman?
I do request that we record this vote as well.
Very good.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bogman, that council direct human resources staff to begin advertising for the permanent position of CAO clerk, and that by no later than April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, council appoint a committee comprised of either two or three members of council to assist in the hiring process and make hiring recommendations to council. Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
No.
Mayor Sloan?
No.
That's carried.
Thank you. Now, moving on to other business. I guess this is just information, Ms. Wilson? So I don't, there's. Sorry, I apologize.
Uh, during the last meeting, council directed staff to return the Front Street Slope stabilization matter to the next open session meeting of council.
Thank you. Um, Counselor, uh, Watson and Counselor Graham and I, uh, had a very productive meeting last week. Oh, pardon me.
So again, just procedurally, um, are you looking to discuss the matter as in reconsider? Or you're just bringing up to date on the?
Bringing up to date on the meeting, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Um, a very, um, productive meeting, um, with the group last week that was representing us, that, that, that contacted us. I think it was a great opportunity for us to get some more information, not just on this project, but on other projects that we'll be dealing with. Um, we were both forthright in, in what our issues were, and um, had a real understanding, I think, of, um, some of the opportunities and challenges that come forward with a uh, a capital investment of this size. Discussions were made about, um, some of the changes that possibly could be done, or when, or if, wha- what we decided to do going forward. Um, but I want to for, uh, remind or restate that we had a very productive meeting, it was, I think, very helpful to better understand the process of not just Front Street, um, but other capital projects, and I take the time to invite, uh, Counselor Graham or Counselor Watson, if they had any other comments they'd like to make.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, those guys after that meeting got a good, really good understanding, uh, why we did what we did at the time, and, uh, you know, going forward, I think it's gonna be a really good working relationship, because we really need those guys. So it's, uh, yeah, it was nice to reach out to them, finally, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Graham, please.
I think just one or two points to mention were that, um, they gave us a good understanding of alternatives of how that construction can move forward, um, they talked about, uh, the specs on the, on a retendering that as well, so I'm looking forward to, um, discussing this matter and making that, uh, decision moving forward.
Thank you very much, Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, can I ask? Either one of you three, did they talk specifically about how they could cost save and how they could, uh, save money on the, on the overall price?
Um, there were various conversations, and, and we got into some specifics. Um, overall, I think there was a general interest in understanding what our budget limitations were as a, as a, as a municipality, as for specific areas, uh, I'll defer here, um, my notes maybe aren't as good as Counselor Graham or Counselor Watson's.
Through you, Mayor Sloan, they talked about how construction, from a construction, purely construction standpoint, uh, it can be done in phases, um, and as well, it would, there would be cost savings if we were looking at doing it over the course of the winter, and from a construction standpoint, they said there was no problem to be able to do that.
Thank you. Follow up, Counselor?
So I'm assuming if they do something over the winter, there would be less cost then. And I, I'm assuming also that if they, they took a phased approach, there would probably be more cost, because you, because of mobilization.
Counselor Graham?
Through you, Mayor Sloan, they didn't say that there would be increased costs with the phased approach, but they did say that there would be, in their estimation, cost savings through construction being done over the winter.
Counselor Connors, follow up, please.
Just one last question, so, did you meet with member, or, did you meet with, um, president of the London Construction Association, or did you meet with the contractors themselves?
Counselor Watson, please.
Yeah, we met with the, uh, president or manager, uh, Kevin Ertz of the London Heavy Duty Builder Construction Builders Association, and, uh, Jeremy from L eighty-two Construction, and Paul De Curcy from Elgin Construction, right? And, um, I know they said it was all about timing on some, on that project, how if they either did it earlier in the year or the later in the year, that, uh, they could maybe find a way to, you know, get it done, I'm not gonna say what price, but there's lots of maybe options that, uh, could make it more beneficial to all of us. So we did talk to the guy directly that sent the letter to us, and, uh, just a good discussion. I didn't take any notes, because I'm the type of guy that I'm gonna talk to straight up, so I think they all appreciated that.
Thank you. Counselor Watson, Counselor Bachman, please.
Um, no offense to, to any council here, but, um, from my point of view, to me, this is all secondhand information. Um, I'm taking your interpretation of what you guys heard at a meeting, and with all due respect, um, as far as possibly your interpretation of how much it'll cost, or the phasing, or this and that, um, there's a lot of aspects to, to a project of this magnitude, and to say we can save money without an engineer's report, well, that, that's all speculation at this point, and until we can get the specs put out there and put it in the hands of an engineer, right now, honestly, we're just dealing with, um, conjecture and secondhand information from my position where I'm sitting right now.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I think the next, oh, Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan, I would like to agree with Counselor Bachman that, um, I did speak afterward with one of the people who was at the meeting, um, from one of the organizations, who, uh, said to me that although they had promoted the idea that, for example, doing the tender in, say, November would be more advantageous than doing it in January to March, uh, they did also say that they are not our engineer and can't really speak to the issue of necessity and safety, they can only speak to what can be done as far as costs, and so I do agree with Counselor Bachman that that's something where we have to consider those two things as separate angles on the same project.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Any further comments? Seeing none, we have one other piece of, um, other business from Mr. Perrin. Sir?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We spoke, uh, earlier today, uh, the mayor and I, with respect to, uh, the harbor dredging tender, uh, that project is currently out, uh, for tender, uh, as directed by, by council previously. One of the questions that has come in, uh, from a couple, two of the contractors is if the municipality would entertain twenty-four-hour operations on the dredging project. That, uh, after talking with, uh, Mr. Riggs, our, our, uh, consulting engineer, he's identified that that would, uh, potentially result in significant cost savings to the municipality in the order of magnitude of two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars if we were able to under, entertain twenty-four-hour work. That specifically is with respect to two of the contractors and the type of operation that, uh, from what we understand they're proposing is hydraulic dredging. So instead of having an excavator on a barge, they would actually have a vessel-mounted dredge that would actually excavate and hydraulically pump the material into a, a, a barge and then take it off-site. That takes considerable work, uh, to set that, that equipment up, um, approximately two hours a day, so if they can continue on a, a continuous operation over a twenty-four-hour period, that would result in, in cost savings to the municipality. What staffer, uh, asking some direction from council on is with respect to that operation, if you're willing to entertain that, as it contravenes the municipality's noise bylaw. The municipality's noise bylaw speaks to construction activities requiring that, uh, construction activities can only occur between six AM and eight PM. The noise bylaw does provide, uh, a vehicle for an exemption, uh, and if council recalls, you provided an exemption to the, uh, the gun club last, uh, week, or at the last meeting, rather, with respect to their activities. So, you know, the exemption's not new, the municipality is, is also uh, provided exemptions on construction projects in the past. Uh, the one that comes to mind is when, on the Highway Three bypass, when that, uh, bridge deck, uh, east of Wellington Road was, um, had new bearings put under it, that work, uh, w- went around the clock, and, uh, council of the day, uh, provided a twenty-four-hour exemption to that, so, um, it would be, uh, for an extended period of time. Um, the bylaw allows for, uh, an exemption for over a six-month period, so staff would recommend if council is willing to entertain that, that an exemption, uh, be given to allow for the twenty-four-hour work, uh, between July first and January first of twenty twenty-four. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Perrin, I have a quick question just to start, did, did you, you, I thought that the, the, what's the dredge particulate is going into the lake? Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, that's correct, so, yeah, the material is loaded onto a barge, taken, uh, actually, the, the one dump site is, uh, close to shore, and east of, uh, of Port Stanley between, uh, there's two sites, one west of the low lift station, the water treatment plant, and one to the east of the low lift station.
Thank you, and just a quick question about July first to January first, there's some, there's some times when they can't go in the water, or is that because it's in the harbor, is it a different place?
Yeah, fisheries pre- prevent, uh, July first, uh, anything before July first.
Thank you, councilors, uh, start with Counselor Bachman, please, sir.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Perrin, having twenty-four-hour access, how short, how much shorter is that gonna make the timeframe for the dredging?
It would allow us to get the work done in this year, in this calendar year, if not, it will probably go over into twenty twenty-four, which would result in, depending on who the contractor is, they would demobilize, tie up for the winter, come back in the spring, so that would result in higher mobilization costs.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Counselor Connors, please, and then Counselor Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Perrin, you had indicated in our last discussion that it would be imperative, or it would be to our advantage to go to tender at this point, which we have, because there's people in the area, companies in the area that were capable, more than capable of doing this work. The news that you're bringing back is excellent, uh, excellent news, and, uh, a- and you should be applauded for it, but I just have a couple of little, little things that, um, I'm wondering, uh, Counselor Bachman answered the one question. Um, how would you go, how would you structure the tender, or how would you have to restructure the tender to allow these people to bid twenty-four, seven work, because you say there's only two, and I'm wondering if you need three, like, three bids in order to be able to award a tender?
So, all we would do is provide clarification, is that the municipality would, um, would consider or approve twenty-four-hour work? If another con, like, there's more than one contractor, right now, I believe there's eleven plan takers on this, on this project. That being said, knowing so, who some of them are, they're, they take plans, that's, that's just the nature of the beast. We would say that there's four key players that have taken plans that are interested in the work. Um, some may not do twenty-four-hour work, some may. It all gets down to competitive market, if we allow for twenty-four-hour, uh, operations, some of those, so, two of those, uh, contractors may take us up on that, go twenty-four hours and reduce the amount of, uh, you know, and we would realize those savings. It doesn't, it, sorry, it, so, in answer to your question, it doesn't preempt other contractors, other than the two, from bidding on the project.
Supplementary, sir, Mr. Counselor.
So, we also talked at, at our last meeting about, um, you had recommended, or you had said that the possibility of dredging every year would lower our costs, um, going forward. Um, so, when we do this all in one year, if we're able to get this done in one year, the next dredging would be twenty-five then, or would it be twenty-four?
Mr. Perrin, please.
Uh, we would anticipate twenty-five, and that would be like a shore-based dredging, just downstream of the lift bridge, where we could, uh, do that work with, uh, uh, a, uh, a land-based operation with, uh, extended, uh, excavator or a dragline, load the material in trucks, and truck it to an, uh, an on-land disposal site.
Thank you, Counselor Graham, please.
And so, Mr. Perrin, what was the, the cost savings potentially?
Uh, between two hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars. It's significant. That's why staff are coming back.
Do you know approximately how loud? I mean, I, obviously, you can't speak to, you know, decibels, megahertz. Just because it is, I mean, there's people that live along the harbor, right, so I'm thinking about how disruptive that's going to be to them.
Uh, fair enough, uh, I would say it, it's as loud as a, as an excavator, potentially, that's the worst-case scenario. If there, there are, uh, and Mr. Riggs and I did speak about it today, there are extenuating circumstances that we would not have, uh, potentially control over, so for instance, these, these are, are lake vessels, so the Shipping Act applies, so in the event of fog, then they would actually have to use their audible, uh, horns as they're exiting the harbor. Um, but there is, you know, if council doesn't want to entertain that, then we could put wording in the tender that they would not be able to operate under fog conditions where, whereby they require to, the use of their, their, their horn.
Thank you, Count, thank you, Counselor Graham and Mr. Perrin, further comments? Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, so we went out for tender on this, Mr. Perrin, so we would just adjust that, just clarification.
Yeah, so the, the tender is out now, and the way the process works is the tenders, uh, posted on bids and tenders, it's out for, uh, for anyone to pick it up, and as part of that process, contractors will take those tenders, and as they go through them, they'll have questions, so they'll submit questions, uh, you know, throughout the process. We have a deadline for questions of April the fourth. Uh, that being said, we will still answer questions, you know, as the, as it, the tender period proceeds, um, so staff feels incumbent to try to make this decision now, so that there's enough time so that uh, contractors can, uh, adjust their bids accordingly if, if need be.
Thank you, Counselor Graham, please.
So with regards to the cost savings, did you work out what percentage the municipality would be saving versus what percentage would fall towards the government funding?
Let me interject here, I don't believe there's government funding on this, is that right, Mr. Perrin?
Correct.
Just as an aside, as I said to Mr. Perrin this afternoon, I recall dredging when I was growing up, and there's a bit of a hum in the evenings, um, and there's a bit of a hum in the evenings. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's uh, it's not exactly offensive, but I mean, if there are savings, it's something definitely to consider, and I'd like to get an idea from anyone else if they, what their thoughts are on this. I think there's a motion ready, but any more discussion, Counselor? Or can Mr. Perrin, any further thoughts?
Yeah, so maybe just to to add, uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. So typically, if if there's a request for an exemption to the noise bylaw, there's, there's a requirement to post that that exemption for a period of ten days prior to council making a decision. So what we're suggesting is that council not make the hundred percent decision today. Um, that tomorrow we would post the public notice that the municipality intends on um, you know, requesting exemption to the noise bylaw. The final decision would occur at a previous meeting of council. But we would like to respond back to the contractors with some certainty uh that there, that we would entertain uh twenty-four hour operations. It would still give the public an opportunity to to uh, you know, give comment or ask questions, things like that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So with the savings, Mr. Perrin, that's awesome. If there wasn't a a huge amount of savings with doing the twenty-four hour, would we have an option to not do that after the tenders come back?
Mr. Perrin, please.
Uh, what we need, and we kick this around a lot today, whether or not we could say we don't give the twenty-four hours uh operation, give us your price, and then give us a credit if you want to do twenty-four hours and outline that. The problem becomes how you look at individual bids and whether or not you're actually giving it to the low bidder or not. Okay, so it becomes a qualified bid under contract law. So the answer to your question, that would be very difficult to do. We, we need to give a level playing field, apples to apples. You can bid twenty, twenty-four hours operation. The lowest bid takes it. If they're twenty-four hours, they're twenty-four hours. If they're, if they're not, if they uh coincide with the noise bylaw, uh, six AM to eight, eight PM construction time, and there's a little bid, then that's a benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Watson, please.
Yeah, looks like a issue of like to short-term pain for long-term gain. Like, we could be uh saving two to three percent of our tax levy here on this, so I would fully support it going forward.
Thank you, Counselor Watson. I believe we might have a a motion here. Ms. Leach, please. Sorry, need a mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman. Whereas the municipality of Central Elgin intends to dredge the Port Stanley Harbor in twenty twenty-three, and that it is financially beneficial to the residents of Central Elgin to allow for a twenty-four hour around-the-clock dredging operation, and that the municipality of Central Elgin noise bylaw prohibits noise from construction activities between the hours of eight o'clock PM and six o'clock AM. And further, that the municipality of Central Elgin noise bylaw provides a vehicle for the council of the municipality of Central Elgin to provide an exemption from the requirements of the noise bylaw. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to advertise the municipality's request for an exemption to the noise bylaw for a period commencing July first, twenty twenty-three, and ending January first, twenty twenty-four, to allow for twenty-four hour dredging operations.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, any more other business? Seeing none, I'd like a five-minute recess before we move into closed session, please. Thank you. Seeing none, I'd like a five-minute recess before we move into closed session, please. Thank you. We need a mover and a seconder to go into closed session, please. Counselor Watson. Counselor Connors.
I move that we divide the question. Um, I would like to move that we divide the question and enter into closed session for CS one and three, but not for CS two.
Uh, Counselor Halpin has asked for a change. Counselor Halpin, could you tell us what you'd like to?
Thank you, through you, Mayor Sloan. I have moved that we divide the question and that we enter a closed session for sections CS one and CS three, but that as the Municipal Act does not require and only allows for the CS two issue to be covered in closed session. I do feel that it's an important matter to the public, and I'd like it to stay in open session.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Uh, Ms. Wilson, comment, please.
So if I'm following this correctly, you're asking that, um, CS two would not be a closed-session item?
That's right, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, I would just, um, I guess procedurally make the comment, you're certainly entitled to have your discussion about the matter in closed session, but you definitely have to report out of closed session. The resolution would be out of closed session.
Thank you. I'm aware of that, Ms. Wilson. Uh, through you, Mayor Sloan, my intention here is that I believe it would be more in the public interest if the discussion also was an open session.
Thank you. Comments, Ms. Wilson?
And again, procedurally, I guess my thoughts behind that just is you are still discussing the contents of the contract. So again, you may want to change something in the contract. So again, I'm not so sure that you would want that discussed in open session when it's about an identifiable individual.
Understand. Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson. Counselor Graham.
So that was my question is because it's about an identifiable individual that we have to have it in closed session, I believe, correct?
Thank you. Count, Miss, just one moment. Sorry, Miss, sorry, Counselor Halpin, is that?
Again, I'm, I'm just making sure that you understand if you're still negotiating the contents of the contract. Certainly, that's what the closed-session portion allows you to do. You would certainly have to rise and report out of closed session. Because
Thank you.
you are, are, you are specifically talking of, about an identifiable individual.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan, uh, to Counselor Graham and to anyone else who is curious about it. And if you would like to open your open meetings book, you're welcome to check in there. Uh, you will see that, uh, there are a list of things that you may enter closed session for, but there are only two that you must enter closed session for. Um, and discussing named individuals is something that you may enter closed session for, but it is not a requirement under the Municipal Act. And considering, um, that this is something that I think the public takes a very serious interest in and is of importance to the community. I think that this is something where it it's a role that it is impossible to be in without being visible to the public, and it would be reasonable for the public to be able to see the discussion.
Of an identifiable, uh, person. Uh, Counselor Graham, please.
I believe that we need to discuss this in closed session because there's some discussions that we need to have openly and fluidly. So, and again, because it is an identify and identifiable, uh, person that we definitely need to have it in closed session. So is there, sorry, is there a motion on the floor?
Oh, motion.
The motion on the floor right now is my motion to divide the question so that we separate CS two from the other closed-session items.
Counselor Noble, or Deputy Mayor Noble.
I thought the motion on the floor was to move into closed session.
It was, and procedurally, to divide the question is a motion that you can insert without notice or leave.
Ms. Wilson? Okay.
Again, procedurally, if there's a motion on the floor,
Sure.
you can certainly prepare that.
Uh, just before Counselor Connors, do, do, or Counselor Connors, please.
So through you, Mayor, um, Counselor Halpin, I'd like to look at what clause you're specifically talking about, and I'd like to do that in closed session. Um, and we can have a discussion, and then we can bring it to open session. But I also, you know, I look at this, these rules and regulations as a guideline and not the actual, what the actual law is. It is a guideline. So I want to be able to read and understand the clause so that we can make an informed decision.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Halpin, do you want to, do you have a seconder for your motion?
Not yet.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you if you have a seconder. Counselor Bachman.
That council proceed into closed session at eight oh seven, eight oh eight PM in order to address closed-session items one and three? Does that satisfy your intent?
Yeah, sure. Um, I, I would say the motion was to divide the question of closed-session item two from the other closed-session items, but however you think is appropriate.
Thank you. Okay.
Would you like me to read it again? That council proceed into closed session at eight oh nine PM in order to address closed-session items one and three?
First of all, well, um, call, if I could call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you. Can we record that, please?
Sure.
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
No.
Counselor Connors?
No.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
No.
Mayor Sloan?
No.
That's defeated.
Mover and a seconder for closed session, please. I think it's on the table. Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that council proceed into closed session at eight ten PM in order to address a matter pertaining to a position plan, procedure, or criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And return to open session at eight forty-eight PM.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, do I need a mover and a seconder for CS one? No? Okay, so that's because it's minutes, it's not. Uh, mover and a seconder for CS two, please. Counselor Watson, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Connors, that as per confidential report, CS two, council approved the employment agreement with Mr. Wendell Graves for the position of interim CIO clerk, and that said contract commenced Thursday, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All those in favor?
I ask that we record the vote.
Sure. Recorded vote, please. Thank you.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
No.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Item three, if I get a mover and a seconder for Counselor, Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report AMDS twelve twenty-three Talbot Line Employment Lands East Side Development Area industrial zoning be received for information, and that staff be directed to revise the extent of the subject lands to include properties north of Highway three and south of the Canada Southern Rail Line between Centennial Ave and Yarmouth Center Road.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Bylaws. May I get a mover and a seconder for bylaw two seven seven nine, please? Deputy Mayor Noble? Seconder? Counselor, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that bylaw two seven seven nine be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And first mover and a seconder for the next piece, please. Counselor Connors, Counselor Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that bylaw two seven seven nine be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And if I could get a mover and a seconder for adjournment, please. Counselor Bachman. Counsel, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three be adjourned at eight fifty-two PM, and that the next special meeting of council budget discussion be scheduled for Wednesday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at ten o'clock AM.
All those in favor? Opposed? See everybody next week.